You know, like the guy from the airport told me the last time I interrupted him. It's my three minutes. Do you need to be quiet?
We can do western, we can do the township, doesn't it?
Oh yeah, don't have it.
No public.
Yeah, no. Well, there's one of our township trustees sitting in the back right now.
Oh, they all want to be on the news.
Don't watch what I say. This is interesting. I have fifty-nine. I have seven. Everybody else have seven o'clock?
Yep.
Okay.
Dr. Chief, how good? Oh gosh, they're all here.
Good evening, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is called order. Pledge of allegiance. And I'm first going to open up to the, this is the Monday agenda. I'm sorry, for the Monday meeting for the proposed on November twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. Mr. Satan, can you lead us, please?
The religion is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just let you know, council, I think all your mics are on tonight. Chip, you want to tell us why? It's just to help us because of the, make sure all your mics are on. I got to keep looking on.
Yep, there we go.
Maybe not. Maybe not. Okay. Let me see here. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gibson?
Here.
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Theobout?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Stewart?
Here.
Mr. Stink?
Here.
Thank you. Approval of minutes?
Can we get a motion to approve the minutes of the November tenth village council meeting?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Six oh. Adjourn to public.
Go ahead, sir. Go ahead and read it.
We're now going to adjourn to a public hearing on the application by Mayor Becker requesting approval of a preliminary development plan related to a proposed development on parcel oh-six-oh-two-two-nine-A-oh-oh-four. Currently zoned PUD. It's on Harold Road.
Okay, first we're going to have the public comments.
So this is a council public hearing.
Thank you, Chip.
This went through the Plan and Zoning Commission on the October meeting. It was approved by the Plan and Zoning Commission, so now it is in front of council. The applicant is requesting the approval of a preliminary concept plan at this time, which means that if approved by council, that it will still go through a final development plan back to the Plan and Zoning Commission. The proposed development is to be a residential PUD consisting of thirty-two single-family detached units and a hundred and one single-family attached units equating to a proposed density of approximately five-point-five-one units per acre. The single-family detached lots proposed ought to be fifty-five foot wide lots with a minimum square footage of seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty. The detached structures range from fourteen-hundred square feet to thirty-one-hundred square feet depending on ranch to a two-story. The single-family attached lots are to consist of four, five, and six-unit condo-type buildings with an attached garage provided for each unit. Two-car garage end units are approximately one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-six square feet and the single-car garage units are approximately one-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-two square feet. The development is to consist of a community park located in open space on lot one-thirty-six with amenities yet to be determined. In addition, there would be a proposed retention basin on lot one-thirty-six provided with a fountain to treat the stormwater water quality on the site and provide an amenity to the community being surrounded by a walking path. The overall development will consist of a total of six-point-seven-six acres of open space, approximately twenty-seven-point-nine percent, with a mix of active and passive opening space, open space as defined in the Village of Batavia zoning code. Water and sanitary sewers will be served by the Claremont County Water and Sewer Department. Roadways will be public roadways built to Claremont County standards. A traffic study shows no significant impact on operations on the adjacent roadway network. It's the opinion of the staff that all conditions of preliminary concept plan is consistent with the Village of Batavia zoning code and will promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of the Village of Batavia. Based on the findings of fact, the staff makes the recommendation to approve the preliminary concept plan with the following conditions: Soil stabilization for subgrades for the roadways, all public space landscaping to be maintained by the HOA, street lighting district established to maintain by the HOA, and no more than three units can be owned by one person or tenant. We do have the developer and the engineering company here tonight, John Delverne with Mayor Becker and then Roger Wells with Columbia. If you have any questions for either myself or them, or if you're answering those.
Forward questions and comments? Anything from anyone?
With the drawing, where, how far is it from the property line to the actual highway? Do you know that? I know, I'm looking from the end of the property line to the end of the, where the townhomes are seven-six, seven-feet. How much further is it to the roadway? There's a fence there. Does it go up to that fence?
Yeah, I see the townhomes are.
About seven-six feet?
Yeah, seven-six feet to the right of way.
Yeah, I didn't really, I didn't really see the actual roadway or even that fence line on the map. I didn't know how far it is.
Okay. Some towns should actually step back a little bit further. They're probably. The townhomes are, if we forget the town itself, from the right of way, they're probably.
To the end of the.
To the top of that, to the rear of the town. If you make the payment to the right of way, it's still probably about.
That machine, sir.
Yeah, I know. It's probably somewhere around three-feet.
Additionally.
That's loose man. By the way, I am, I am John Delverne with Mayor Becker, site engineer.
Well, you did put down your mounding and landscaping as well. How high would that be?
That hasn't been determined yet, but it definitely would be fine with the local plan. It would definitely. Delverne comes to council when we have this.
Okay. Will that extend all the way down to the edge of the property line or does it dump into the homes?
I would let, I mean, preferably we would get it from the east line all the way across the structure.
Okay.
What I'm concerned about, on area.
So if that's going to be all completely new mounding, anything that's currently there will have to be removed. And so any substantial trees or anything like that are going to be gone.
Yeah, I mean, there's some trees in there. Probably we take that and go now. We haven't done the actual site survey yet, so there are some, some vegetation that. There's a field there. The trees are to the north.
Yeah.
I think you're right. I think there's. If there was some trees, there's some trees in there. Yeah.
And I'm looking at the homes. Is there like a minimum structure to property line? You know, is it ten feet, five feet? Is there, what's the, is there a minimum?
Well, the side yards. The side yards are five yards, five feet on the side.
Okay, so five feet of structure to property.
Yeah.
And I know in our report, we had talked about not more than three per own. Is that structured around townhome versus a single-family home? Because somebody owns three of the single-family homes? That's, I mean, I kind of were worried in the past about rentals. Is there any way to say only one single-family, but?
That's total.
That's total.
One owner, they cannot own more than three.
But they could own three single-family homes.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't think we, that's not more of us. We do like a free, limited, free, I don't care about the pattern of structure.
Okay.
I don't think we want that.
Yeah, I think we've, we've run into that before in the past of having single families fall into rentals. So we've limited them in the past. So I understand townhomes, you know, people can rent those more often, but the single families that I think you say they fall in district fair sometimes with their rentals. So, yeah, that, that would be one of maybe my recommendations to look at. You can, one single-family home and three total potentially. I don't know if that's something we can, we can put out there, if that's something to discuss.
Sure can.
Okay.
Like I said, there'll still be a final development plan. Nobody can really get their plans complete. That would be back in from the Plan and Zoning Commission.
Is that something that the planning zone you can talk about and put on the file? This work. Yeah.
You can, you can actually put that as condition here now.
Yeah, I, I like that. Agreeing in three total, but only one single-family. You can have a single family to townhome or three townhomes. I like that. Does anybody have any objections to that?
No.
I think we've run into, into the past, I guess, that just where they'll probably screw them up and then call them district fair. So I like that. And with the townhomes, will those be an HOA service, like landscaping, things like that? So, yeah, they also, somebody who has three townhomes is going to be served by HOA.
We often hear from the community that they want affordable housing. Would you classify this as affordable housing?
You know, there's a thousand definitions for affordable housing. I would call this affordable for working first. So it's not affordable in the sense that it's, there's any subsidies, but it's, it's a, what's going to be available here as an option in our, some of the cheapest homes in any, any three-level home. Yeah, so we're not spending a lot of money on amenities and driving the cost. You can add professional homes. You can add some of the things that are on the ground, drive the price, but you can get a basic working team.
Do you have a price range now and then we can't hold to anything because it could be five years, six years for a spell, but?
I think it's, the price range would be two, three would be the lower end. Entry level would be a little bit cheaper than that, but I have heard that there's some available or not used, but two, two hundred and sixty.
Any other questions to the developers? Thank you, gentlemen. Any, any discussion further from the council? John?
Public.
Public comments? At this time, sorry. At this time, we're going to have a, if it's all right with council, if you're, you're actually finished. This is the time where we're going to have a public comment. Just as a reminder, you have about three minutes. It is on the board. And we have a total of ten, but there's only two that have requested to talk. That's Mr. Albright first. Mr. Albright?
Bill Albright, Army League, Batavia, Iowa. You got it out now. I don't know if you paid any attention when the township went through. They had a subdivision. People were tired of these tiny lots. They got rejected, eighty-six percent. People were tired of these tiny. Bigger lots. You all like to say, it's like the township does. You got a housing. I call bullshit. Total and complete. Your housing crisis study. You got too many houses. Too many houses fifteen feet apart. Good waiting for it. They don't have one subdivision, one project, and you are the township having. You're adding more kids, more traffic, more homes for that fire department. You guys just had a failed levy on and now the township wants to break off from you. And you're adding more home. Enough is enough. How many kids are going to be going to school?
I think that's a good question. Have you asked them that?
I don't know.
I can tell you that the last twenty years, the average is going to be one kid per six and a half hours. New homes that have been built in this state school is the best.
How much of the more occasional value I'm sharing and I have built for your children, their high income?
Yeah, and I won't say the last five years, it's actually been like one and then twelve homes, but I think that's just for what's here. What's being built is coming here. So I did it twenty years after.
Kyle, did you have any statistics on how many of the students are actually new to the district?
I don't. And what's available is enrollment numbers from the state and then through the county you can see, I'm sorry, we're taking on control.
Yeah, report to your county.
Go ahead.
Yeah, what's available is enrollment numbers to the state and then new home builds from the county through their website.
I can tell you from your, from your county study on your housing crisis, paragraph right out of, no single municipality has the capacity or the resources with all these complex issues alone. Between you and the township, you have nothing but high-density subdivisions, projects popping up everywhere. You've got so many, you ain't even started. Enough is enough. You're going to make a tax rebate with more screwing, screwing that fire department, screwing everybody who owes the page property taxes. Enough is enough.
Mr. Geis, since Mr. Albright brought it up, are there any abatements on this property?
We updated the map a month ago.
No.
Is it within a CRA?
It's not in the CRA.
So it would pay its full tax rate, correct?
Correct. Mr. Fisher?
Yes, I was just wondering how wide are the streets because I've been out there at Harvest Meadows before and that neighborhood's absolutely treacherous to get through that neighborhood. So I was just wondering the width of the streets?
There are the public, public streets?
Chip.
Back to her back, her, scan twenty-four feet. Yeah, I think I'm here since twenty-eight or twenty-nine. Curve to curve.
Should be twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, okay. But the line running down the middle is.
All right, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, okay.
And how does, Mr. Fisher? And Harvest Meadows is twenty-four, sir.
Okay, twenty-four is a lot better, twenty is a lot better than twenty-four.
Yes.
Whoever proved that Harvest Meadows?
We didn't.
Not them, but that's absolutely ridiculous.
Yeah.
Hey, moving on here, you know, the crystal ball of how many kids per, per home, I think that's a little disingenuous. I love that word, by the way. No one really knows how many kids are going to be per house. So, you know, those projections are very much a shooting from the hip. I know in the past, this, this board right here has tried to go ahead and, you know, use the number of kids per home as kind of like a way to justify greed. Obviously, I, I caught wind via your fun fair lady that this was not going to be abated. So, yeah, just, just throwing that out there and thanks for answering my question about the streets right there. Glad to hear they're not twenty-four foot like Harvest Meadows.
Thanks, sir.
I think you signed for the general. We're going to do another one with this. This is just.
Yeah, this is just. Okay. It's all right with the council. Closed the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? If I roll.
I think. Do it by roll.
Do by roll, please.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Theobout?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Ben?
Yep.
And Steve? Mr. Satan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Closes that.
And it is?
Seven-twenty-one.
Seven-twenty-one.
Public comments?
Okay, we're, we're back in regular session. Now, public comments for the regular session.
We have first, Mr. Gallagher. Oh, same, the three-minute mark, sir. You know, you know the routine.
Chuck Gallagher, Claremont County Airport. Tonight, we're going to be approving CRA two, assume, resolution three-eight-eight-two-five. I'm sure all you guys that read all fifteen pages know it pretty good. Page one, section one. The area designated as Batavia Community Reimbursement Area Two constitutes an area in which facilitates or structures of historical significances are located and new housing construction or repair of existing facilities or structures are discouraged. So we got historical structures and significance in this area and new housing discouraged. So if you look at the map of CRA two. We got three lots up here, a hundred and seventy-five acres, and we have five lots down on Clark Street. Like point one eight, less than an acre, all five lots total. There's no structures here whatsoever. That's woods and fields and it's always been that way. And there's going to be seven hundred new homes built. I don't know what the historical significance improvement is. So, and the funny thing is, is the five homes on Clark Street were in the original CRA. So we can say CRA and CRA two. And they just got removed from the CRA September eighth and got placed in CRA two on October fourteenth. Now, if one was looking at it like myself, I would perceive it that kind of like a bait switch. We're going to take these five lots that ain't even an acre, take them out of this CRA so we can make the settlement. If we don't need these five homes for these hundred and seventy-five acres, then why are we doing it? You can correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, that's how, that's how everybody out here looks at it. So also, you know, in this thing, you can look at page twelve, section eleven. The community, the CRA two must have a CRA Housing Council with seven members. You guys all know who those seven members are since we're approving it? Section twelve, we have a Tax Incentive Review Council, six people, including a member from the Board of Education. Can anybody tell me what member of Board of Education is on this? I, I don't know. Then we can go back to the assessment that we're going to, assessment agreement. Is assessment and pilot the same? I'm confused. We have pilot payments. I thought assessment payments for the bonds on the infrastructure. Now we have an assessment agreement tonight, which is fifty percent tax abatement. You know, we're approving that in November twenty-twenty-five. I have a copy of the preliminary agreement with Bauman Development from June of twenty-twenty-four. So we're making promises in June of twenty-twenty-four, and now we got to keep our promises? So we got to make the CRA number two. We're going to take these five homes, add a hundred and seventy-five acres of seven hundred new homes so we can get the pilot payments, the developer can get reimbursed for his three, five million dollars for the sewer, water, infrastructure? I don't know. Is it allowable? I guess it is. Is it the right thing to do? I don't think so. We, at some point, we got to start looking at the right thing to do. We have a community that's highly divided right now and it's not getting any better. And at some point, we got to make it better. So I encourage you to really, I mean, review this before we make it legislation or not.
Mr. Albright, I know. We got to catch you off with what kind of everything else.
All right.
That's, thank you.
Can I point out a typo on this?
We let you go pretty far, so.
Yes.
Mr. Wait, I don't know if you fixed this, but page twelve, section thirteen, you have a date of December thirty-first, twenty sixteen.
I have which date?
Twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen. Section thirteen, page twelve. Check out that date. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Geis? Could you please answer Mr. Gallagher's question concerning the two committees he mentioned in the document?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. What's the question?
Mr. Gallagher pointed out in the document that there was two committees. One of them actually required a member of the school board on it, a taxing authority. Can you answer his question on those committees in there and if they were consulted in the development of this?
Yeah, the Tax Incentive Review Council is done by statute and the school board is permitted to send representatives for that. So they, they're required annually to meet and typically, it's recently been in August with the county and they review all the tax incentives that are for each jurisdiction.
So this was at the county is where that committee actually, where they can go in and make their comments?
It is a, a meeting that is generally chaired by the, the county auditor, correct?
And Chuck, what was the other committee you mentioned in there?
There's a housing council.
Seven people.
Seven people.
Who is the housing council and did just go through them?
The housing council will be chosen by the mayor for this one. You can use the existing housing council for the, for both CRAs or you could have a separate housing council for this.
Thank you. Mr. State, any other questions, sir?
Yes.
Any other questions? Uh, Mr. Fisher.
Hey, greetings at Batavia, Joe Fisher here, I'm not going to touch that. Hey, I just want to go ahead and give myself a big shout out for being right about everyone getting kicked out of office, two to one, by the way. The CJ levy is going to fail, I said that right here too. And I said Batavia Township should go ahead and start its own fire department, looks like that's going to happen too. And then also, I'm going to say if you prove the CRA tonight, I'll probably go four to four, the village is going to dissolve, so, uh, good luck. Speaking of the CRA, Scott, you were up there multiple times and you lied to everyone. You said CRA was not part of Airport Views. John, you confirmed what we all knew, it was a condition of that. You lied to Katie over there who went ahead and spoke as a village resident here multiple times. You said CRA has not been decided. We knew that was a bunch of crap from the very beginning. And, you know, Scott, speaking of that, since I'm on the subject here, you know, let's go ahead and, you know, you, you like to align yourselves with people that call the school board cowards and, and call the school board clowns? Call the superintendent clowns, that's who you align yourself with. And, and you know, I'm, I'm thinking up here, like, you said you don't recognize the school board, the school board doesn't recognize you. You know, you put that conductor uniform on, when you go down there to the schools this year, I hope they don't let you in because you should be wearing a different uniform or a different costume and it shouldn't be Santa Claus. All right, moving on here. Twenty million dollars from the school. Kyle, you were at the school board last, last Monday, I hope you let them know that you're voting to take twenty million dollars from the school the next Monday, today? So, uh, you know, congratulations on, on taking twenty million dollars. Oh, understood, you're at the school board, but you know, here comes Kyle, I'm going to vote, I'm here for the awards and by the way, I'm going to vote to take twenty million dollars from the schools next week, so, hey, good job, man, way to watch out. Nobody cares how many kids, like, generations you came from or if your aunt works at the school, like, you, you are, or if there's a deal, you can blame Keith for not approving the deal or the school board, it's the students that get hurt. You know, and you guys should be ashamed of yourself. John, you've been up there before, you go ahead and shake your head how proud you are to take all that money from the schools. Diane, you're a solid six oh voter. Jason, the next ex vice mayor of Batavia, you know, you love to point out, oh, not everyone's going to go to schools that, that owns a house, like, do you really think the real estate, how they calculate real estate revenue for schools? Like, that they don't, they think every house is going to have a kid? Absolutely not. Moving on here. I, I went ahead and spoke about the village potentially dissolving. I think the four folks that got elected to the council got some really, really, they have a lot of damage repair after what you guys have done here. Steve, I have to give you credit here, I always don't agree with you. The first time you came in here and went ahead and rambled some stuff about the unimportance of revenue from real estate taxes for the schools. You truly are the only one that's had any logical thought or discussion or, or criticism, not just go along with the, with the group think going on here, so, uh, like, that's the one compliment I'm going to give this board all year. Everyone have a wonderful evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
You can set the clock to one there, the microphone right there, you know, that's where your voice.
Was that? I didn't see that. Thank you, sir. Okay. Katie Bailey? Katie Bailey? Really? Katie, can you? Can you tell us you're a resident? And your name and where?
I, I currently live in the township of Batavia. I used to live in the village of Batavia. And so, I'm, you know, but both areas are a part of the community of Batavia, which is why many of us have concerns and we're here. The use of CRA tax abatement programs diverts the public services of our community of Batavia millions of dollars. As a former ICU nurse in the community at Mercy Claremont, I can tell you based on evidence-based practice that in a true medical or fire emergency, minutes count. According to the American Heart Association, every one minute of delayed care in a cardiac arrest event decreases a person's survival rate by ten percent. I'm not aware of the statistics of the, of fire, what the delayed response times are, but I'm sure fire spreads very quickly, so I'm sure it drastically decreases the survival rates of anyone that's in a burning home and potentially even the home that's next to, to them because of how fast the fire spreads. I'm also here as a parent of a child who attends Batavia Local School District. I have concerns of the diverting of millions of dollars from public schools in our district for many reasons. Teachers such as yourself, Mr. Stewart, you rely on funds for races and for equipment for teams that you coach, but also with the diverting of millions of dollars from Batavia Local School District, there's concern about the busing services being taken away. Working parents really rely on busing services and it's something that's happened in many school districts in our area. But also, I'd like you to keep in mind that this development, if approved, would be the fourth large housing development that uses a CRA tax abatement program. So keeping that in mind, there's going to be a lot of children to Batavia Local School District. So these funds are really crucial to Batavia Local School District to be able to expand the buildings and to be able to hire more teachers to, you know, teach these kids. You know, the former vice soon-to-be mayor, Mr. Meyer, or, sorry, Mr. Gibson, he had mentioned that his job was to grow the village of Batavia, but that's not true. Everybody who's sitting in your seat that was voted into your seat, you were trusted by the people of the village of Batavia to do what's best for them and theirs. And the results from the current election show that the people of the village of Batavia do not approve for the use of a CRA tax abatement for new large housing developments and that's evidenced by the current nominees that were either on council or in administration received less than half of the votes that, you know, the other four candidates that are not for the CRAs received. I just want you to keep in mind, sorry, I'm really nervous, but I just want you to keep in mind that it's never too late to do the right thing. And doing the right thing would be voting no for the use of the CRA tax abatement programs on this and all new large housing developments in the community of Batavia. Allow, uh, allow tax dollars to flow naturally as intended to serve all parties involved, including our vital community services. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Randy?
Good evening, everybody. You know, tonight we're asking to move forward with the Baumann CRA. And I need to say what every resident of Batavia is already thinking. We still have no deal with the schools, we have no deals with the fire and EMS, not even a memorandum, not a draft, not a framework. We have nothing. You know, that should concern every single resident in Batavia. Let's start with the basics, that the community reinvestment area is a tax abatement. And the thing is, this one is a one hundred percent tax abatement.
It's just, it's just on the building, not the way. So it's the same as the other ones. Sorry, I just wanted to.
Let, let it be that. But here's the thing. Mr. Geis, you're supposed to be an excellent negotiator. Any one of us in here can negotiate a hundred percent CRA. This, this project also has real concerns about FFA regulations, yet it's going unchecked, unconcerned. These are legitimate issues of these people that are potentially buying these homes. And now here we are seeing the consequences of these relationships that we've not taken care of. The township has taken its first step to undoing CJ Fed and let's be honest about why. They're tired of unfunded tax abatements, they're tired of carrying the financial load. They're tired of us being poor co-owners. These decisions that affect all of us. And yet we still haven't made a deal with anybody. You know, I'm just concerned, here we are, taxpayers and we're just giving it all away. Like, this is our home, we're just giving it away. We can do better than that. You know, even if the schools walked away from this agreement, whatever the agreement was and why maybe the fire department never were able to get to the table, why are these partners distancing, distancing themselves from us? If our schools and first responders actually matter like we say they do, why aren't we at their door every single day asking them again and again to come to the table, to sit down and negotiate so we don't leave them out? Why aren't we showing true leadership instead of shrugging our shoulders and walking away? You don't quit after one meeting. You don't quit because the conversation's uncomfortable. You don't let partnerships crumble when the future of our schools and our safety services depend on it. So tonight, before we move one more inch further on this Baumann CRA, I'm insisting that we secure real written agreements with the schools and the fire and EMS. You know, um, I just know, deep down, everyone can really care about this village. I just wish we would see it, thanks.
Thank you, Randy. Mr. Albright?
Mr. Albright again. I don't know how you can go through with this one, five hundred people show up to the very first meeting about Airport Views. You can change the name, still Baumann Development. Here we are, over a year later, you're still talking about this. That's pathetic. I don't know how you can go through with it when you've got three lawsuits hanging on the property. Two of them get lost. You got another one ain't even been dealt with yet, you're going ahead with it. That's pathetic. You're trying to cripple this village for the four new people that are totally against this bullshit. Geis is good at this stuff. Screwing everyone. You're all going along to get along with him. Jason's still mad his school left. Dee about started this shit, he's all in favor of it. Cole goes with either one of them two right there. You three are going out. Stan, you said you against this stuff plenty of times. Well, we're about to find out. Meyer, you said you ain't voted yet, we'll see what you're made of. That leaves you. You care so much about that school, you'll say hell no. Leave it up to Ruck, he's on the ex-school board. See where you stand. Shouldn't be going through with this, there's lawsuits holding this property up. I hope to hell they never get settled. You pass this, I'm telling you what. Me, I'm one of the biggest mouths to get rid of this village. You're going to screw this for the four new people, they won't have a chance to picture bullshit. You're just putting another nail in this village's coffin. I'll make sure you all get an axe during, when they all go down as the last people in this village.
Thank you, Mr. Albright. Colleen Price?
Good evening, my name's Colleen Price and I'm a resident of Batavia Township. I'm here tonight because what this village does absolutely affects me, my neighbors, and every taxpayer in this region. A previous meeting's member of this council have asked why township residents care what the village is doing. And the answer is simple, we share services, we share schools, we share fire and EMS, and we share the consequences of your decisions. When the village creates a new CRA, it doesn't just cut your own revenue. It cuts revenue from joint fire and EMS from the Batavia School District and from other institutions that serve both the village and the township. These CRAs directly affect our taxes, our services, and our safety. And this couldn't be happening at a worse time. The fire levy narrowly failed and the township has now issued a formal statement announcing its intention to dissolve the joint fire EMS district and pursue its own levy that excludes the village of Batavia. That decision didn't appear out of thin air. It's a direct response to the village's pattern of approving tax abatements that weaken shared resources and shift financial burden onto everyone else. So yes, township residents care. We care because your decisions affect our firefighters, our EMTs, our school funding, our taxes, our safety. And tonight, while the future of fire and EMS is uncertain and the joint district is at risk of breaking apart, this council is considering yet another CRA, another reduction in revenue for the various services that are already under strain. Before you vote, I want to ask you directly, how will you justify approving tax abatement when shared fire and EMS funding is already collapsing? How will you explain to your village residents that essential services are in crisis while you continue to give away future tax revenue that would have funded them? And why move forward now when four members of this council were just voted out and new leadership begins January first? Leadership chosen by residents who clearly want a different direction. This village should not be locking in long-term tax deals in its final weeks, especially when those deals affect thousands of residents outside your boundaries and undermine shared public safety. So tonight, I'm asking you to do the responsible thing, vote no on this CRA. Not forever, but until the new council is seated, until fire and EMS funding is clarified and in council you can publicly demonstrate how these decisions will not harm the schools, the district, or the safety of both communities. The voters have spoken, the township has spoken, your shared service partners have spoken. Please listen and vote no tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Nizer? Ray?
I think you know me, it's Ray and I, sir, live up on Clough Pike. My comments are more related to the Baumann Development and to the Harold Road. In general. You've done it. You've degraded standards for development by allowing high-density development with lower-tier developers like Ryan and MI. I did that, by the way, but, and, and you've degraded your ethics by resorting to tricks to force, force the county to approve annexation and then revoking an ordinance, going to a voter's referendum and replacing it with another ordinance just like it and passing it with an emergency vote to strip the voters of their right to vote on the issue. Then adding five houses two miles away from the real property just so you could add it to, just so you could legally create another CRA. I mean, those five houses, if you drive it, they're two miles away from the property that we're really talking about. But not only have you done this to the village, not only have you degraded the, the standards and ethics of the village, you've done it to the township. I mean, you really have. You've got the township officials running scared. You do. I mean, they, they're now borrowing your playbook because they're trying to avoid having more property stolen away from the township. They're, they're, they're going with high-density development with lower-tier developers and they also now have just spit in the face of the voters by, by replacing the referendum with another one and passing it with an emergency vote so that the development can take place. But I don't blame them for that. I blame you all because it's your actions that have led directly to this. They're doing this strictly as a defensive posture against the relentless, ruthless onslaught that you all have brought on. Now, I understand several of you are replacement council people, but from what I've seen, only one, Mr. State, has not been another rubber stamp for the council. I have more to say, but I can't fit it in the next thirty-four seconds. I have more to say, but I can't fit it in the next 34 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Neizer.
Thank you. Before I begin, I just wanted to ask, can everyone hear me? Because with the open mics, I wasn't sure. Okay. It's a real brief report, and then I do have a request to go to executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121 dot 22 G3 to discuss with legal counsel pending our imminent court action concerning the village. The report for the month is, my office did, interacted with members of council as requested, answered questions concerning the actions of council and the actions of members of council. With respect to zoning, there is a hearing on the CRT, not CRA, property, the CRT property, December 2nd, at which point the court will adopt a new schedule. And we did have a mediation on the other property, the net result of which is the homeowner agreed to clean up the property, and we put an order in place with a working schedule. If all things go according to the agreement, within four months, we should have a nice property. So, again, on the zoning matters, generally speaking, when we go to these hearings, the request is simply, what do we have to do to get the property cleaned up? And the good news is to report is of the two cases we have active right now, one of the two appears to be resolved. So with that in mind, I would ask council for a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121 dot 22, parenz G, close parenz, parenz 3. That is, to meet with legal council to discuss pending or imminent legal matters.
Mr. Meyer, Mr. Gibson. Byroll, Mr. Gibson.
Yes.
Ms. Cole. Mr. Theobat.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Statham.
Yes.
It is 7:50.
7:50.
So if this were to not pass right now, would the future village council have the opportunity to revisit this? Or would that not be something that...
If council is not willing to pass the developer agreement on that, I would respectfully request that we not go forward with the CRA this evening. Because, again, I'm not going to give a legal opinion here, but the CRA, the adoption of that, provides what I believe to be a perceived right of the property ownership on that to certain characteristics. And I don't believe there's any reason to bind the future property owners or the existing property owners once that's passed. But, again, I'm not giving a legal opinion here, and I'll defer to Mr. Moore on that if you want.
And not to split hairs, that's correct. But to be clear, you can do one without the other, but Mr. Geis' take on the import of doing one without the other is spot on. So if you're not going to do one, I would recommend you not do the other because you're implicating potential legal rights that have not been clarified yet.
Thank you. I don't think that this fire department issue clouds it. I think it complicates it. I can tell you that I had a decision made regarding funding with the schools, and I appreciate the effort from the village to try to agree to fund the schools completely. I think that effort was made. I'm not saying, Randy, I don't disagree that we should try again, but so far that has not been fruitful. The same thing with the fire department, from my understanding, from Scholz. And now to learn that maybe it's a very real possibility that the village is going to be left without emergency fire services, I don't know when. I don't think anybody knows what that letter means, but it's concerning and certainly makes this issue more complicated and worth considering. Because there's a potential for this funding to operate a new fire department or pay for those services to be bought out from another jurisdiction.
One second. They can, Scott.
Yeah, my daughter's dad, she fell. And I guess she fell face first, Laura fell.
Laura fell?
Yeah, they said busting up, nose all up. So when we get this moved out, I'm booking it, my family's more important than this, sorry.
Two, three, one, two, three.
Do you have a sense of ready?
No. You ready?
Yep.
We have a motion to return from executive session.
So moved.
Second. Gibson. By role, Mr. Gibson.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Theobald.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Saden.
Yes.
It is nine thirteen, eight thirteen. That concludes my report. Other, do you have anything?
Yes, just really quickly, I just a couple of shout outs. A shout out to the local collective, we have a local collective that just started a new business on Main Street. The old D and J buildings, if you don't write down, going east, I was going west up here. Thank you to the Christmas committee for all you're doing. If you notice, there are new decorations for the middle of the aisles for the streets. So in December, let's see, oh, one thing especially about the new tree that's coming out. Wayne, I think tomorrow or Wednesday is picking up the new tree for a large tree for Main Street. It's going to be decorated on Monday, on Monday after that. Again, thank you to the street department for eliminating the trees. To the Christian Help Center, thank you for feeding the community last night. I really appreciate that, we really appreciate that, the legislative. CRAs also is going to have another one tomorrow night from four to seven back here at the Armory. I'd like to also thank the Patavia Police Department Chief and Sergeant Warner for all the joy from collecting for our community, for the foods there for the needy. In Old Boston, I just want to make sure this is pointed out, in Old Boston, in our village, there has been some constant work on an apartment building that's really, really come forward. I'm going to send them a thank you for making what used to be something that needed to be kind of dilapidated, but now has come back. And if you, like I said, all you have to do is go up Old Boston, head a little bit northeast, and you'll see the new buildings, actually the new facades on that building. What's that?
Just put a CRA in the net.
But does that, you know, I mean, they've done a marvelous job to bring that back up and make it not a nice order anymore. Okay, that's all I have. Village Administrator.
Thank you, just two things this evening. First, I'd like to talk about the assessment agreement. The council has gotten copies of that, and that's a document that's evolved over time in conversations with the developer as it relates to that project. The agreement calls for a, with the passage, if council passes the CRA after this, then the homeowners would be responsible for making an assessment payment to the village for 50% of what otherwise would have been used for milledge. There's no consideration at this point for anything back to the developer. There's no compensation agreement to the developer that is, that I know of, that I've been involved with as it relates to that. As it stands right now and with passage of this, it would be the benefit to the new property owner. One of the things that is new to this discussion is that apparently after, during the last township trustees meeting, there was a motion to direct the township administrator to begin looking at passing or adopting milledge. That would relate to a new fire department for the township, which would in effect dissolve or begin the process as it relates to the joint central fire district. With this, I think that this assessment agreement has a significant more meaning at this time because the village, if in fact, this all occurs, and again, I'm not going to go into how that can occur, because again, I think that's a legal decision, and there will be statutory requirements as it relates to that. However, there will be a funding responsibility for the village. The question for village council, and it will be the new village council, is to whether or not they create their own fire department. The startup cost and all that, again, I've been a ball of the nose, it's expensive to begin the fire department, and it's expensive to operate a fire department. There is the potential that, and again, there was a, at least they mentioned that, I guess, the township would consider a contract with the village to provide fire and EMS service for that. That remains to be seen. There is the opportunity for the village to contract with other agencies as well, if they decide not to have their own fire department. But all of those are going to cost money, and they're going to cost significant amounts of money to the village. And funding those things are either going to come, you know, in a couple of ways. One, it could come through general fund revenue that is existing at this point, which I don't believe there is the capacity for the village to fund what would be, what I would assume would be an equitable amount for either a new fire department or a contract. The second would be for the village, similar to what the fire department at least has laid out in the letter that they sent to me, is reviewing the opportunity for voting milledge from just the village. For fire services that would either include their own fire department or a contract with someone else. Again, I think tonight we're talking about this developer agreement. This is a funding mechanism that would provide an amount that is greater than what normally would have been collected for the fire department. And this could be used, again, I don't know what those numbers are at this point, because we haven't really been tasked to review that yet. I'm assuming that in the very near future we will start doing that. But I think that it provides a sense of urgency and a sense of need for this particular issue at this particular time.
Just to recap, Mr. Geis, just to hit some high points, there's no agreement with the developer to give them any money, is that correct?
That's correct.
To take a bond offer.
Correct.
So any assessment that we're talking about would be earmarked for anything, or would it just go to the general fund and then weaken your market from there, or the future council could, is that kind of how that works?
In the agreement, there is no specific allocation procedure, so we'd go to the general fund.
It would begin to either look at creating a fire department if the township is successful in creating their own, you know, or if that falls apart and stays with CJF, you could look at potentially giving them portions of that money or the school district portion of that money as well?
Again, there are no agreements, the school district has indicated that they're not interested in entering into an agreement with us. The fire department is yet to officially respond to any inquiry on that. So, again, I think that the council and mayor, at whatever time, would have the ability to direct that revenue to whatever means that they so desire.
How is us directing this revenue in the future better than what the voters have already decided how it should be directed? Why cloud this issue with the fire department? They're separate issues, the fire department, the soonest it'll probably get on the ballot is February. Clouding the issue of this assessment agreement with the fire to get it through here before the end of the year is not something I plan on being a part of. It can easily wait the few weeks until the new board is seated, and the voter's will is then listened to.
Mr. Saden, with deference to you, and I appreciate your position, but this is a situation that is ripe now, and this is before the council, and this is an opportunity for them to respond to this and to be fiscally responsible in this regard. And I don't agree with your characterization that this is clouding any issue at all. I have talked about a CRA agreement for this property for some time, there's been no hiding that from anyone.
And if we're talking about not hiding anything, we go back to February, and the mayor and Mr. Gibson both stood up at the school board and said no more CRAs. That's what they said there, I believe there's even a video of it. Unfortunately, Mr. Albright wasn't filming there, but there is a video of it. They said no CRAs.
I never stated that. The only thing I said to them out loud was that we were offering to make them 100% whole. That is the truth.
You did, Scott.
So, just continuing on, Mr. Saden, I appreciate your opinion on that.
The thought is to pass the CRA so that we can get direct funding for our, a fire department or to go out and get, and get somebody to cover us. So the, the thought is that money's got to come from somewhere and it's either got to be a pass levy for the voters or it could potentially come from somebody who has a CRA and then the additional assessment on top. So that's what we're discussing here.
Well, that's, yeah, this would, this would, this would be a safeguard in what you're talking about. This would provide funding no matter what. So I think you're talking about harvest methods where we're seeing an older clientele, that the income tax is not there. This would be a tax against the property value. So no matter what, even if they weren't working, there would be, there'd be assessment. So money would flow in. And we, and the, the question is if they, if we don't abate them and they pay, we're not going to get as much money to fund potential fire departments if we abate them and assess 50% of the assessment. 100% because we were talking about it and we were hoping that we'd begin with the schools and we'd begin with the fire department to do an assessment that would pay them.
Mr. Millard and I have met a couple times.
Since the letter came out, has anybody out there, anybody reached out to the township or the fire department and said, yeah, we're just trying to do this or reached out to the fire chief and asked?
We did not. After they passed it, we were sent in a letter. We were advised beforehand. We were sent a letter after they held an emergency meeting and passed it.
The fact that I see is that the timeline of this CRA conversation has been extended multiple times in efforts to include the schools in an effort to include multiple readings to give everybody time to get on board. The, the timing is fortuitous as much as anything because we've get, this, this could have happened in the summertime. This could have happened in the spring if we had not spread, if we had not stretched the timeline for everyone else's benefit. It has benefited no one other than the people who wanted information. I'm not asking for your comment, Mr. Albright. I'm not asking for anyone's comment. I'm just making the comment that the timeline has been stretched in an effort to include the public, in an effort, waiting for the school to, seven month wait for the school to come and, and finally, I'm not asking for your comment, Mr. Albright. I'm trying to make a point. We have stretched the timeline in order to include everyone in the conversation and they respectfully walked away. I'm not asking for your comment, Mr., I'm not asking for your comment. This is a comment to the board next to me.
Yes, it is.
The timeline has been stretched. It is fortuitous that we are here today, having received the information from the township that they intend to dissolve the CJ Fed Fire Department. Now it is imperative and more important that we consider this because of the threats. Not dissimilar to Mr. Millard coming in here and, and saying, there's only two ways that I'll consider talking to the village. That was the first time he made any indication that he wanted to talk with us. At that point, that is when I made the decision to rescind our ordinance and pass it on emergency because that was the first time that man had ever offered his opinion on how he would do business with the village of Batavia. This is not different. I'm not asking for your comment, Mr. Millard.
I am.
That is what happened. I, that, I'm just illustrating what happened. If he wants to talk to the mayor about commenting, I'm fine with that.
Mr. Millard, hold on guys. Ladies and gentlemen, just wait a second. I think this-
Please come up to the microphone.
I don't, it's not that I don't want to hear what you have to say, Mr. Millard. I just want to get my point out.
So do I.
He will have his opportunity. I just want mine. Talk to the mayor. He's running the show.
Mr. Millard, absolutely. If you want to come, if you want to come up to the mic, go ahead and just, you know, say you have three minutes. Do you have a few minutes since you do-
I'm going to have to go.
You have to, excuse me, I'm really, really up for the weather. So I'll try and be brief with my three minutes. So to, to go to Mr. Gibson's counsel. When I was here in January, if you remember at the very end, I said that the, that the, there was an interest of the school board to meet with members of council. And so we don't even need to get to the ordinance. The ordinance is about, we're going to probably have to agree to disagree about why that was done and what are the forces were at play with that. That being said, when myself and the board president and vice president went to a meeting, no members of council came. Only Mr. Geis was sent. And I'm just going to just be really honest and transparent that that engendered a lack of trust.
Did you tell anybody this, Mr. Millard?
Yeah.
Did Mr. Geis stop and invite anybody from council to attend your council?
I don't know. I don't know. All I know, all I know is that when we had the meeting, we were told that no members of the council were going to come.
When was this meeting?
March. It was the March. So we had the meeting and these are, these are, these are difficult, complicated issues. They're not going to be complicated. And so we had a meeting. We had numerous on our side. We had numerous meetings with our bond council about this issue. A number of questions were raised that we couldn't answer and had no one to talk to about it because again, we were not in a position where we were feeling very trustful of going and getting those answers. So we sent a letter. The letter wasn't an offer. It was not a, it was, if you read the text of the letter, it was a series of questions. If you read the text of the letter, it was a series of questions.
I read it differently.
No. I was, I was, I was the author. I was the author. But instead, what we got back was, oh, well, here's the dream. That was, that was sent by Solicitor Moore to our bond council. And for a number of weeks, we weren't even aware that that was out there until our bond council came to us and said, well, hey, I've, I've got something and we should probably look at it. So we did, we did look at it. You know, but again, just because we sent a letter asking questions to try and figure out where things stood because again, in good faith, we showed up. We showed up. And unfortunately, we got to a point where we had to reduce things to writing, try and figure things out. And on advice of our council, after doing our due diligence, the advice of our council was for all the things I wrote in August, it's all there in black and white. There were many say that there were concerns about enforceability. There were concerns about the ability to pay. And as I'm here tonight and just sitting back listening, you know, you know, there's when, when Mr. Moore, or I don't know, my three minutes, or Mr. Rock and Mr. Gibson said, you know, we're going to make him, you know, 100% whole. I, I don't know, I don't see how 100% whole comes with 50% of the CRA going to the village and 50% going to-
That wasn't part of it, yes.
Right. So, so, you know, again, you know, there's, the, the school district, the school district under the leadership of the Board of Education and under my leadership as well has sought to take Cairo. We've heard everything that we've been called. We've read all the stuff. We're going to agree to disagree on a lot of things. My stance is, you know, still from the very beginning, you know, if the tax dollars flow as intended, we're probably not having these conversations. I think there's other ways to do this.
So it sounds like we misunderstood your questions. You misunderstood our agreement. So is there room to come back?
Well, I don't know that we misunderstood your agreement. We don't-
Well, if you misunderstood yours, you definitely misunderstood ours because ours was making whole 100% of the village. You and I talked about, we sat at a coffee shop talking.
Well, we said, well, well before any of this came to mind.
Yeah, 100%, but 100% was the goal.
Yeah, but well before any of this comes. So let's, let's just be clear about the timeline. It's not that you and I talked at a separate meetings about this. Right. Okay. Well, let's just be clear about that. You and I did not have side meetings.
I, oh, 100%. Yeah, I don't want to start that up.
Right. I just want to make sure that we're really clear about that.
But all my conversation with Mr. Geis and Mr. Moore was 100% whole. And that's, with your letter was we want to be 100% whole. I didn't realize those questions. So that was the end of government agreement we sent back. But it sounds like there's disagreement or misunderstanding of both sides. Would you be willing to come with him then?
There, there's always, there's a, there's a willingness. I think the same willingness that, I'm going to go out and live here, but I believe that there is the same willingness that existed way back when, when members of the Board of Education showed up to sit down with members of council. And I would assume at this point, it would be members of the new council to have a little discussion. So I would say yes.
So if we came to the next Board of Education meeting and we had that discussion, or would you want to have a separate discussion?
I think we'd need to be a separate discussion with new members of council.
Okay. You're not willing to work with the council?
I certainly don't want to speak for the Board of Education. I know that time is limited. And, and as we come across the Thanksgiving and Christmas season, I just know that time is short to be able to go. As I said before, the issue is complicated.
It's not time, it's time, it's not that you only-
Complicated, you make it complicated.
I'm sorry, Mr. Theobald, do you want to say that a little bit?
I said, don't have to be complicated.
I think that, I think the, I think what we need, thank you, thank you, sir. I think what we need to take away from this is if, if that is correct, how I'm reading this time, is we need to, with the new council and the two existing council members at that time to meet with, if you want me there to have a, we'll make a meeting for you on, starting January 1st. We'll send out whatever you want us to, whatever the new council and the present council members want to do. We'll send that meeting date out, put it out there, and then we'll go from there. If that's all right with you, Mr. Millard, without checking with the, with the school board.
Any, any meeting has to have the requisite number permitted under Ohio law or, or it's an inappropriate meeting. I'm just going to note that. So I would, I would recommend that not all of the school board and not all of council appear at that meeting.
Oh, I understand. Okay.
And I, I'll leave it to the school board's council to give their own advice, but I'm just making a general statement when I say that.
Thank you. Anyone else in council?
I'd like to get back to the CRA and the use of the, the CJ Fed as reasoning to pass this. I, I, I just can't agree with that. There's no reason this can't wait a few weeks. If the, if they go to the ballot in February, it's going to be the next January before any money's affecting anybody. It's not like we're looking at an emergency that if we don't do something tonight, the village is going to fall through. We need to take time. We need to have this looked at both sides, not putting two separate issues together to get your way on one vote. This, this can wait and it should wait. The village is extremely valuable. I mean, I'll liken us to, the village is like a gem and if we polish it for a little while, it's going to be worth even more in the future than it is today. You know, to borrow from this CJ Fed stuff, I think it's time to quit the fire sale attitude of giving 100% or 50% or whatever. I think the, these things need to be answered on what are they giving us, not what we're giving them.
And just, just, I just have to, you know, timing is everything. And I'm just speaking, I don't usually say anything. And when I, aside from when I do say something, I try to make it very poignant. And I'm going to try, Mr. 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 Ibrahassol, I just have really concern and reservations about moving forward with this option. As of right now, I just have a concern for that. So that's all I'm going to say because I know there's a member of council that wants to lead. As this, as timing wise, I just have an issue with it or not, I have a concern about it. So go ahead.
All right.
Go ahead, Mr. Mr. Wait.
Do we have a motion to authorize the village administrator to execute the assessment agreement, excuse me, with the village of Batavia and the Baumann Feldman LLC?
So move.
I'll second.
Mr. Gibson. My role. Mr. Gibson.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Theobald.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
No.
Mr. Meyer.
No.
Mr. State.
Mr. Mayor.
And I'm gonna, yeah, this is a, and I'm not gonna, I'm not going to support that. No. If I, if I, I'm not going to support. At this time.
All right. I gotta go, Scott.
Go ahead, Mr. Theobald.
I have a family emergency at the house right now.
Thank you and God bless you and your family. We're going to pray a prayer, sir.
Thank you, host.
Resolution, contract, Geis Consulting?
All right. We have a, a resolution 38625, a third reading, a motion to amend the Geis contract for 2026. Do you have a motion?
Yeah. Can we have a discussion about it? I'm sorry. I should have said that. I apologize. I was reading something. I, go ahead.
Mr. Geis, I believe that the finance meeting, you stated you did not ask for this. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So what I'm wondering as the village administrator, and this is coming up for the third reading now, there's been any number of possibilities that you could have stricken this from the agenda. Would you like to strike it now?
I'll, I'll speak up. I, looking at, you know, the pay schedule, you know, Mr. Geis is the administrator and in my opinion, the administrator is the, you know, the mayor is a part-time position. He doesn't pay full-time hours, so it's a part-time position. The administrator runs the house. And the fact that the administrator is not the highest paid official here is what concerns me. I don't think that's right. I think this is a good step to get him where he needs to be.
But the administrator is the highest paid official when you do by an hourly rate. His, his rate of pay at this, if he were a 40-hour employee, would be $160,000 a year.
But he is not, we don't pay his insurance.
We most certainly do pay his insurance. We do pay his insurance.
He's a contract employee, so he pays on taxes. Is that correct, Mr. Geis?
Right.
My fault. I meant that.
But we do provide him with health insurance, which is not something you would do. I still look at it from the standpoint of it's a contractor. Contractor comes to you to build a house and they say $150,000 and you, do you sit there and say, we're going to give you 175? This should never have made it on the agenda since Geis Consulting did not ask for renegotiation of the contract. I also look at it at this standpoint, over the year, he has been tasked multiple times with negotiating with the school and the fire department. And to give somebody a 9% raise at this point in time for things that didn't get done is just beyond me. I think there's, there's amazing things that he has done for the village and he's been a great asset for the village too. But we also have to weigh the liabilities that Mr. Geis has brought. And just the fact of keeping the village might be a major liability that we're facing. I, I just can't in good conscience give a 9% raise when we were only giving 5% to the employees. And no, I wouldn't adjust it down to 5% or anything like that. And he is the highest paid employee for three days of work.
I think, I think, and again, this might be my, I'm sorry, this, this might be mine because I brought it back, I brought it back just to think, my thoughts were, to bring you back for three readings in, in regards to, if I remember right, and I think I was there at the, or I was not there, I think you, the finance committee members wanted him to be the highest paid. And I think the next, I think he is currently the highest paid and that's, that's why I wanted to keep it. I, that's why I even brought that up. I just wanted to make sure that we followed that. But go ahead, Mr. State. And I just, that's the reason why I kept it on the agenda.
I, I still contend that that is the highest paid. When you do it hourly or annually or incorporated or whatever, he's the highest paid for a three-day-a-week employee, for a part-time employee. I realize I know that he's got to be working from home and everything else, but he is only here three days a week acting as the village administrator. I, I just can't see why I never got on him. I understand, Mr. Mayor, did you put it back on, but?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is becoming a very unneeded distraction for worse things. I'm, I'm, it's, I'm fine with removing it from-
I'm, I'm, it's, I'm fine with removing it from consideration tonight.
I, I'm, is that up to the council solicitor?
If he asks for it and the council wants to do it, then they can. I would ask anybody in council just to say, let's table it or draw it.
Okay. All right, sir. Can you straight, can tend to re, can you reflect that that has been stricken, please?
I have, well, it's been tabled.
Been tabled. Okay. Moving right along. Resolution establishing.
Mr. Geis, do you want to table that one also?
I would appreciate if council would consider table on that.
Okay. That has been tabled.
Ben got there first.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
I'll second.
By roll, Mr. Gibson.
Yes.
Mr. Cole.
Yep.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Staton.
Next.
Just to, to clarify the books, let's, let's go back up to the one above and, and do you have a motion to table that and second?
I'll make a motion to table resolution 386-25.
And, and Staton. Okay. By roll, that's a motion to table. That's Mr. Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Staton. All right. Okay, so now we're down to ordinance approving the preliminary development agreement for the Baumann, I'm sorry, for the Bundle Hill property on Harold Road. This is a first reading. Question is, do you want to declare an emergency and waive the three readings? Do you have a motion from anybody to do that? Okay.
First reading.
On a first reading. Let, let's do that by roll. Mr. Gibson. First reading, you normally don't.
No, we don't need to do it by first reading.
All right. Well, that's all we've got then.
Okay. Committee meeting reports, Monday, December 8th, 7:00 PM is our next regular council meeting. Tuesday, December 16th at 7:00, uh, 7:00 PM, next planning and zoning commission, commissions meeting. Any other questions or comments from council?
Happy Thanksgiving.
I just want to just make sure everyone knows, again, happy Thanksgiving to you and your families and God bless you all. Motion adjourned? Second.
Hi. How are you?
No, the whole thing is.
How long do you plan on staying? Because when you resign, I resign. Okay, just letting you know.
Village is going to hell.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Oh, Scott, can you sign the minutes they approved?
What's Jason Gibson, Vice Mayor. Well, here. Happy Thanksgiving, guys. Okay, sometimes I miss things. Thank you.